Council meeting, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Present.
Isaac Chavez.
Present.
Taylor Crenshaw.
Present.
John Large.
Present.
Robert Stevens.
Present.
Clarence Wharton.
Present.
Eric Woods.
Present.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the minutes from the November 10th regular meeting and also the work session.
And if you, the loose minutes that were on your desk when you arrived, those are the updated copies of both of those, so those would be the ones we'd ask you to pass.
Do we pass them both at the same time or do we separate?
Yeah, they were the same night.
Okay, I move that we pass them, or separate minutes as presented.
I do have a quick question on the motion carried for the minutes. Councilman Beardsley had to abstain, should that read 601 or 610?
Yeah, six and then zero for the nay and yeah.
It should be 601, you're correct. We'll make that change, thank you.
Can you make the motion with that amendment?
Yeah, we'll change the motion to be as amended.
Okay, thank you.
So that was Clarence, and then who was the second? Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Taylor Crenshaw.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Wharton.
Aye.
Eric Woods.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comments, and our first one is Jonathan, let's see, I have Bailey, correct? Okay, and this is in reference to an alley vacate? So, should I have him talk first or go ahead?
We should go ahead and open the public hearing for that, and then we can have him speak during the public hearing.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna close the council me, or recess the council meeting at 7:05 and open the public hearing. And then if you would like to speak about this vacate that you're asking for.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Bailey, I live at 2006 West Barner Street in Frankfurt, and I'm here tonight to petition for the council to vacate an alley that runs between West Barner Street and West Green Street. It runs on the east side of my property, from one end to the other. There's a, my house, there's two houses on that property that have direct access to the, utilize that direct access for their property. My property has parking at the back of my home, and that's the only access, only parking that I have on my property. And then the property that is on West Green Street, I think it's 2003, is the house, and the map shows both of those. Those are the only two houses on that property that have parking, off-street parking that's on that, access to that house. There are three other properties besides those two properties that butt up to the alleyway. However, the house is directly behind me, 2005, I think is the address. They have a fence that's completely closed off their property, so they don't, they do not access the alley from their property. They also have entryway to their parking lot behind, or their parking spaces behind their house, on the west side of their building, comes off of Green Street. And then, the property that is directly to the east of me on 2004, on Barner Street, he has a little entry, the way that he has placed in, where just put some gravel down so that he can access it, but he also has access to his parking spaces and his garage from Barner Street itself. The, one of the reasons why I'm petitioning for this, I'm in the process of actually tearing down my house and building a new house, and over the last probably two to three years, I've started noticing an increase of traffic, both FedEx trucks, delivery trucks of all sorts kinds, pizza delivery guy, and they're using the alley as a street. It's not designed to be a street. Back in the fall, when they started doing the grading of the alley, city came out, they did the grading, the grade work. Once they did the grade work, they were a few weeks behind on the gravel work, and in that meantime, we had multiple heavy-duty trucks go down through there, left deep, deep ruts, they had to come back through and completely rework it before they could even do their gravel work a second time. And the, the danger there is the people just are, I mean, they're going down through there 30, 35 miles an hour, and that alley is not designed for that whatsoever. I've mentioned it to the police department, they say, it's an alley, we really can't patrol that, so that's, that's my concerns there. What I'm asking for is that the city vacate the alley, I talked to the street department about it, when I noticed that we had some rut issues after they did some grading, and they're the ones that recommended that I come and do this. This would be a savings of probably close to, from my figures, obviously, I don't know what your cost is on materials, but around $10,000 a year to vacate that alley, because I would not ask for any, once it was vacated, obviously become property of the budding property owners, and I would not ask for the city to maintain any of it. My plan is to close off the back half of it and plant grass where the gravel currently is. There is a telephone line, or telephone poles, and I think it's telephone lines that run through that alley, from Green Street to Barner Street. I would not have any problem with people, because it's gonna be my driveway, so if they need to get in and do some work on that, my neighbors have, they've paid for an electric security light from the city, and I've already talked to them, and their, that was their concern, was that they wouldn't be able to get in to repair that if necessary, and I have no issues with them bringing a vehicle in there to repair that. So, I just, it's something that I'm just petitioning for, for the council to consider. It would be great, greatly appreciated if you would. Do you have any questions for me?
I think if it's utilities in that alley.
There is a storm sewer.
There, there are utilities in that alley, Clarence, and the city would retain an easement for that purpose.
I was gonna say, we'd need to maintain it.
Yep, we'd retain an easement for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's a storm sewer that runs down the middle of that, from seven or eight years ago, that was put in.
I have more of a legal question, we do not have public hearing on the agenda.
Yes, the public hearing was advertised, they did submit everything to the city, it just didn't make it on the agenda. Because it was advertised in the newspaper, we will be able to have the public hearing tonight. Yep, they submitted all of their documentation to the city in advance, it just inadvertently got missed on the agenda.
So what is the process after this, then, Alicia?
Yeah, so if the council wants to approve the alley vacation, then there would need to be an ordinance that would need to be done, vacating that alley, the ordinance would retain the easement for the purposes of utilities, and then the land that was part of that alley would basically go to the homeowners that are adjacent to it, and it would get split between those homeowners. So if the council wanted to move forward with that, we would need to do an ordinance to that effect. But before, we would want to discuss that, we'd probably want to see if there were any other members of the public who wanted to speak regarding the alley.
Somebody have any other? Clarence, did you have another question?
Well, I was just wondering, have you talked to all the neighbors?
I've talked to the neighbors across the street from me.
Cooks?
Or across the alley from me, and then the neighbors that are directly behind me. They did not, when I talked to them, the attorney had sent them a certified letter as well, I think they, they had some concerns, as you did, about the storm rain and the utilities, the people that are directly behind me off Green Street. My neighbors across the alley from me that we actually would share that line, where they had no problems, they were one of the ones that said, why don't we see about getting the alley? They're tired of the traffic.
The petition also indicates, Clarence, that there was written notice provided to all of the homeowners that are adjacent.
There's two, two individuals that are attached to that alley.
Just so to be clear, there's the, where is the, that was put there?
Yeah.
You didn't talk to them directly, but they did receive written notice of it.
I, I, correct.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, but they did receive written notice.
But everybody's received.
Okay, thanks.
So can I go ahead and close the public hearing?
As long as there's no one else that wants to.
Does anybody have anything else on this petition? Yes.
I'm David Moore, I have a property on the alley too. I just wonder why we need to close it? Like everybody drives down there 100 mile an hour every day, and lots of telephone lines are there, last spring the telephone kinda went down there, so it doesn't get used by the life count, the phone company. I don't see no reason to, I talked to one the other day, and he said he don't see no reason to. We're afraid one people on one side park gravel now, we're afraid they're gonna use it as their own personal, so we can't, you know, somebody says, you know, it refers back to us, we can't do anything with it, so the phone line is, so what's the purpose of it? One neighbor said, in 53 years, they've put gravel on twice. So, you know, like it's not that much as maintenance, or to drive a grader blade down there.
So, we should work with the process. Is there something else, does he have to file anything? Or do we just make note of it?
We just have the public hearing, and then.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm the wife of Jonathan Bailey, and I've lived in this property for 26 years almost. While I understand what Mr. Moore is requesting, he's asking why people are not, they don't use it as a racetrack, is what we would consider it as. This past fall, when they did grade, there was a rut probably four and a half inches deep from a bicycle, that stayed in that, and it's still, technically still there, even when they came back in and did the grading of the alley and replaced the gravel, the ruts are still there. There are multiple people, in fact, in one evening when we were sitting outside our home, in our truck, while it was running, in 15 minutes, seven different delivery people went down it, from Jimmy John's, Domino's, and Papa John's. At no point in time is this supposed to be a road, it's supposed to be an alley. There's multiple access points to Green Street, on each end of the, from Morris, Walsh, and even at Luther Howell Park, there's a paved alley. I understand that Mr. Moore does have a problem or questions about that. He also has fenced on, or fenced off, his property that is a budding up to the alley, so that the people at 2003 West Green Street cannot have access to it. He does not use the alley on a regular basis, and I'm aware of that. But we are not worried about him, it is about the people that are using it, coming straight from the west end of town onto Barner Street, turning down our alley just to go to West Green Street, when they could have turned at Morris, or then they're turning back west to go back onto West Green Street. It has nothing to do with the people that are living on the alley. I have almost been hit multiple times, pulling out of my driveway, backing in and out of my driveway. It's, it's a problem for us, may not be a problem for anybody else, but it is a problem for us, as we are one of the only two homes in that area that have direct access to our parking, only parking on that alley.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:17 and reopen the council meeting. So do we need a vote on this, Alicia?
You guys can vote on this tonight if you want to, and then I can prepare an ordinance regarding that, if you approve it. Otherwise, you can take it under advisement and consider it, and then at the next meeting, you could take a vote if you wanted to.
It sounds to me like this isn't a great urgency to, to act immediately, I think it might behoove us to allow us a month to, to think through it and see if anybody else contacts us and, and then deal with it. That's my suggestion.
I would agree, I'd like to go drive it.
Yeah, I'd like to go, I'd like to go take a look, because it's hard for me, I know the area, but it's, and I understand what you're saying, I have similar situation, but I'd like to go take a look at it before I make a decision.
I mean, if there was some pressing need that we needed to, then, then maybe we need to think about it a little right now, but I don't think there's a pressing need to immediately make the decision, so let us kinda chew on it a little.
I agree, and I'd like to go drive it, because I haven't been down it in years, and I'd just stop and ask the other homeowners.
Could I get a motion for that, then, to take it under advisement?
I'll make the motion to take it under advisement.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Taylor Crenshaw.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Wharton.
Aye.
Eric Woods.
Okay, so they'll take that under advisement, and then we can bring it back up at the next meeting, which will be January, end of the day?
I can look, let's see. That will be January the 12th.
January 12th. Okay, okay, thank you, thank you for being here this evening. Okay, next on the agenda, did you need to talk again then, Mr. Moore?
No.
Okay, that's what you signed up, okay, okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, then we have the resolution regarding the trail system, and that's resolution number 25-11. And Steve, do you want to talk to us about that this evening?
Yes, if I could, please. Over the last, I think over 20 years, I've been meeting with different trail groups and recreational pathway groups to talk about the need for Frankfurt to have these kind of amenities available to our citizens. There have been a number of different committees that have tried to talk about this, and I know that Larry and Carol Price have done a lot of work with bicycles and trails in general. I know Mayor Stock was, was champion, putting a loop around the city of trails. Rick Gunyon worked with us like 20 years ago on, on some of these kind of things, and we've, we've talked and talked and talked and talked, but now I think it's time for us to actually take a look at an actual implementation of a small section, and Carol Price is going to address what we're, what we're proposing, if we can allow her to speak to us.
Okay, okay, Carol?
Thank you. Thank you, I think you all know that I'm Carol Price, and I'm here tonight as part of the Friends of the Clinton County Trails, and also as, I'm representing Healthy Communities, I'm on their board. So our Friends group is talking about a new, a new trail for our community. As you know, we worked, as you know, Steve talked about, we've, we've created all kinds of walkways and all kinds of bike ways in our community. We worked on getting a bicycle and pedestrian master plan in 2016 that both the city and the county approved. So there's lots of documentation in here that everyone has agreed, this is an important thing to do. So I think you'll, you'll agree with that. So, we know that, I can give you all kinds of reasons why we need a trail, but we, we all know that people can walk and bike and be more healthy, but in, also, people want to live where there is great amenities, like walking and biking and trails. So we know that it's an economically good thing to do, we know that, that new people want to, people want to move to a community that has that, but also, if people are healthy, they, they can, they can work, they can, they can be productive citizens in our community. So it's a good thing. I want to talk to you tonight about a new trail that we're talking about, and I'm gonna pass these around, if you would take one and pass it. The trail that we're talking about is called Wesley Manor Trail Extension, and this trail would connect a lot of the community amenities that we already have. So we would, I'm gonna say, let's start at the end, I'm thinking of the lagoons at the end, but it's actually, let's say it's the beginning. So a trail that would go from the lagoons, cross 75, and go across Wesley Manor property. So now we have connected the lagoons, where people find that as a great nature place in our community, to Wesley Manor, where there's a lot of people living, and they're, they like to walk and they like to bike. And then that, that trail takes us across the creek where there's already a bridge, behind Arborwood, to the TPA Park, which is also another great city amenity. Then it takes us down behind, and to the area where the Frankfurt Utility Offices are. And when we get there, we're really close to one of Frankfurt's great amenities, the Milky Way, right?
Yeah.
So we all need, you know, I always say, I can walk a mile if there's ice cream at the end, right? So it takes us to the Milky Way, but that connects us to the Complete Streets Project that Frankfurt City did several years ago, which brings us back to Prairie Creek Park and the downtown businesses. So it's a great, it's a great trail that utilizes a lot of space we already have. So if, when you see the, when you see the map, you can see that the blue line is sharing portions of roads and sidewalks that we already have. The orange line is, is an area that has to be constructed, new construction. The yellow line is a short piece of the trail that has a concrete surface, but it would have to be redone because it doesn't meet the criteria for the trails. And then the red stars are the trailheads, so there'd be places to park near the utility buildings, in TPA Park, and at the lagoons. And the people at Wesley Manor don't need a parking, because that's where they live, and they can just go either way. So it's a great, it's a great, we think it's a great connection, a great idea of a trail that would make a big difference in our community. And so you think about people parking at the utilities office there, in a new parking lot that we create, and people can walk downtown, they can ride their bikes downtown, or they can go all the way to the lagoons, visit our park on the way. So we think it's a great trail. So do you have questions about what you're looking at? So Healthy Communities wants to partner with the city, and so I have a document that I'd like to read to you, signed by our board president and Laura Archibald, our director, our executive director. Healthy Communities of Clinton County Coalition, a 501(c)(3) organization, is willing to become an affiliated organization for the purpose of acquisition and management of financial funds for Friends of Clinton County Trails. So Friends of Clinton County Trails is not a 501(c)(3), but Healthy Communities is. So they can serve as the fiscal agent for grant funding, for donations, for holding money for these trail projects. Healthy Communities of Clinton County will receive and manage monetary funds on behalf of Friends of Clinton County Trails, such as, but not limited to, municipals' funds, such as the budgeted money that the city has. It could be other funds that we could look for, from the DNR, there are lots of grants. And we also think it would be a great opportunity to look for grants that need matching funds. So these funds that the city already has could be, could serve in a way to double that money, or sometimes your match only has to be 10% or 20%, so it's a great, it's a great tool to have. And this was signed by, expenditures from these funds will be controlled by the members of the Friends of Clinton County Trails, and it's signed by Stephanie Kozak, who's the board president of Healthy Communities, and Laura Archibald, the executive director of Healthy Communities. So basically, we're willing to be partners for, I know when Healthy Communities started, we weren't a 501(c)(3), and so we needed the Clinton County Hospital to be our fiscal agent, and otherwise, and we operated that way for several years before we could become a 501(c)(3). So everybody needs a little help, and it just works out. So this is what we're trying to do, to help, to help the trails group. I don't know if I have, so I think that's, leads us to the resolution that's already on the, on the table.
And there's, the resolution you have in front of you, I have a couple of amendments that we're proposing to this. At the, at the bottom of the first page, it starts out, whereas the council shall create, we're gonna strike, the council shall create, and say, whereas a committee of citizens known as Friends of Clinton County Trails shall work with HCCC to determine the appropriate implementation of the trail program. That, that, that group, the Friends of Clinton County Trails already exists, and again, talking quickly here to Judy before, we didn't see the need for an additional councilmatic committee, so that's why, that's why that change is made. Then on the second page, point number two, along the same lines, the start of it, we absolutely agree with, in the event that it fails to utilize the funds for the purposes herein set forth, then we're gonna strike, or if HCC fails to consult or collaborate, collaborate with councilmatic committee regarding this project. We're striking that part, again, because we're not envisioning a councilmatic committee, but the, the city shall be entitled to recapture any amount of the city has paid. So if it doesn't happen, the money's coming back to the city, is that was, is basically what that says, so. And, and what we're looking at is the 25,000 that was budgeted for the 20, for the, this fiscal year, and is in the budget, so we're not asking for anything over and above what's budgeted, we're just asking that that actually be expended to the, to Healthy Communities for this project. So if, at this point, I would move that we approve this, the resolution number 2511 as amended.
I can second that.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Carol?
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Taylor Crenshaw.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Wharton.
Aye.
Eric Woods.
Okay, resolution number 25-11 passes.
Thank you very much.
And I will make the amendments to that and get that to you, Carol, for signature.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, thank you. Okay, next we have three different resolutions, we've been working really hard with the budget at the end of the year, and in order to transfer funds between categories within each department, it has to be council-approved, so that's what these are all about, is we've worked with each one of the superintendents or the chiefs, and to see how these need to be transferred. But it's no additional funds that we're asking for, it's just within their budget. So the first one is resolution number 25-12, and this is a transfer for the Parks Department.
And you did get an updated version of that loose on your desk as you walked in, because we did add one more line from the original copy that you had. This is pretty standard, every, every year around this time, we have to do a little shifting to allow business to proceed as usual.
So the first one's resolution number 25-12.
I'll move to pass resolution 2512.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Taylor Crenshaw.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Wharton.
Aye.
Eric Woods.
Okay, resolution number 25-12 passes. Next we have resolution number 25-13, and this is for a transfer within the police department. Do we have a new one on that, or is that the same one that was in the packet?
That is the, the same one that's in the packet.
I move we pass resolution 2513.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Taylor Crenshaw.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Wharton.
Aye.
Eric Woods.
Okay, resolution number 25-13 passes. Next we have resolution number 25-14, and this is for the street department, and it's the same as what they have in their packet, correct?
I know your motion that we passed resolution 2514.
Second. Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Taylor Crenshaw.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Wharton.
Aye.
Eric Woods.
Okay, resolution number 25-14 passes. When did we want to do the petition for the, want to go ahead and do that, or? That's up to you. Do you guys want to go ahead and do the petition for the annex, voluntary annexation, or move on to the DCA appointment, which would be like? Want to go ahead with the petition? Okay, we'll go ahead then with the petition. Alicia, can you talk to us a little bit about this?
Yes, so there is a project that is being proposed out by Blue Green, and they are doing some duplexes, and they want to do some single-family homes, and they are requesting annexation into the city of Frankfurt, so they have provided a petition for voluntary annexation. All of the property owners for that area have consented to the voluntary annexation, and then they have provided a copy of a fiscal plan to you. That fiscal plan shows the five-year projected cost, they had a municipal advisor prepare a five-year projected cost, so that you could see the cost that would come if the development were to occur. So the initial cost would be zero, because right now that land is agricultural, so there's no services right now that would need to be provided, but once that development were to occur... But once that development were to occur, then there would be some costs associated with it, because there would be a number of houses in that development and duplexes. So those projected costs of service are provided in the fiscal plan that you received in your, in your packets. And then there is also a legal description of the tracks that would be used for this. The, there's also a map from Beacon that shows the property, so you can see the, the map on there as well. And so they're requesting voluntary annexation. So I don't know if you would like, Tony Del Rio is here, he is one of the owners of the property, and I think he could speak if you had some questions. Barry Kiesel is also working on developing the duplexes. He's not here tonight due to a miscommunication from the city. So he was going to be here, and then he, he was told that he didn't need to be here because it, it wasn't on, listed on the agenda, so under, on its own item. So they did submit the documentation to the city on the appropriate timeline as requested, and so it was going to be on the agenda tonight.
Now, are they paying for all infrastructure? I wanted to just know that.
So, yeah, so developments that come to the city of Frankfurt per our Unified Development Ordinance, they are required to pay for the infrastructure, they pay for the streets, they pay for the utilities to get out there. And so unless there was some sort of, you know, economic development incentive that the city provided that, that said otherwise, per our UDO, they would be required to provide all of that infrastructure. And my understanding is that that is what the developer is planning to do. Is that correct, Tony?
Correct.
Okay.
Put street light and all that.
Streets, lights, utilities. Yes. Sidewalks.
So at this point, what, what movement do we need? Do we need a?
Yeah, so if you want to move forward with the voluntary annexation, then what I would need is just kind of consensus that I would get this published in the newspaper. Our next step is that we would take it and we would publish it in the newspaper. I would get it to the paper by December 12th. It would be published on the 17th, and then we would need to have a special meeting on either January 6th or January 7th, due to the voluntary annexation ordinance timelines, to have a public hearing on that fiscal plan. At that time, we could pass a voluntary annexation ordinance on first reading. I would get that prepared, and then we would have to wait 14 days after that hearing before we could have another meeting to pass it on second reading. Typically, because of the timelines of the council, that would probably be in the meeting in February, unless you wanted to have a special meeting after 14 days.
Well, I mean, you're just looking for consensus. I'll just say, Tony's been incredibly patient with us for a long period of time wanting to do this. We really need housing in this community. I would really love to see us go forward with this.
I would agree with Steve. I think the housing situation here in, in the city is, we need housing, and Tony's agreed to, to work on this and, and do something about it. I agree with Steve. I think we need to move forward with this.
I should agree myself.
I have a question. What, what's the advantage of annexed in versus not annexed in?
What is the advantage to whom? To the city, to the developer?
Developer and the city.
So the advantage to the city is that the city would retain the tax dollars from the property taxes of this. If it was annexed into the city, then that would be city tax dollars and tax revenue that we would receive for those houses once they were constructed. The benefit to the developer is that it would be in the city limits, so it would receive city services. Fire, police, street services, all of that would be, trash removal.
So you want those services before the buildings take place?
Well, if they, if they annex in before they construct, then they would also be under the city's building codes, the city's, City Plan Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, all of that.
We have a unified code anyway, so.
We do, but it's different than the county's.
It is?
Yeah.
I thought we had a unified.
No, it's not, it's not one. We have a Unified Development Ordinance, and the county has a Unified Development Ordinance, and they are two separate documents. They are very similar, but they're not exactly the same.
Okay.
Yep.
And if we annex it, we also make sure the roads stay the width that we need them.
Right.
So.
Right, the city's, the city's codes would, would be in effect then if it was annexed in advance.
Tony, did you have anything? Did you want?
No, I'm ready.
Okay.
Great, great stuff, like, I'm hearing the trails, too. It's all needed here in this town.
Well, I echo the other counselors. We definitely need the housing in our community, and, and I thank you for willing to invest in the community, and I know you're a great community person, and I thank you for that. So.
You've got to do, to make, continue, you know, to keep it great.
Yep.
And stuff, you've got a lot of good talent on the, that's for community.
I know he does a lot for Main Street also. Thank you.
Yes, he does a lot in the community, so. Okay, can we do a consensus, or do you want to?
It can be a vote, or we can do consensus. It doesn't really, whichever you prefer, councilman.
Consensus.
And woman.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, my next step then is I will get a notice of public hearing submitted to the paper by December 12th, and then we will have that public hearing, that will be published on the 17th, and then we will have that public hearing either on the 6th or the 7th. I need to know what date you all would like to have that public hearing, either January 6th or January 7th.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
And with that being a special meeting, we could just have the public hearing and?
Yeah, we would just have the public hearing, and then we'd want to pass that ordinance on first reading.
Is that a meeting that could be attended remotely, so that those of us that didn't want to come in just for that one event?
Yes, we would have to make sure that a majority of the council members were present in person who attended remotely, but yes, some could attend remotely if desired.
Either day works for me, so you guys decide.
Wednesday's better for me.
It's good Wednesday.
Wednesday?
January 7th.
What time? In the evening?
Whatever time you all want. You tell me.
At the same time as council meetings, you want 7:00 or?
7:00.
7:00?
7:00 would work.
Okay, so I've got Wednesday, January 7th at 7:00 PM is what I will put in the paper. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay, great. I will get that taken care of. I do have another meeting that night, just for your information, so I will not be able to attend the meeting, but I will send someone from my firm to take care of it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
No. We just need a warrant.
Okay, Sam, do I have any other questions or anything on this? Okay, next we have unfinished business, but I do not have anything on the agenda. Does anybody have anything? Under new business, we have BZA appointment, and Sam Payne has been your appointment, and it expires December 31st, so.
I will move to reinstate Sam Payne to the BZA Board. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
Taylor Crenshaw.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Eric Woods.